All right, well. Hit the gavel and we will open up this meeting of the City of Sandy Planning Commission. And this is Monday, November twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three, six thirty in the evening. And we will begin with a roll call.
Open some. Okay, Commissioner Wegener.
Here.
Commissioner Pullen.
Here.
Commissioner Weinberg.
Here.
Commissioner Ramsay.
Here.
Commissioner Myram. Absent. Commissioner Vincent.
Yes.
And Chairman Crosby.
Here.
And then I also noticed that Council Liaison Maiteon is on as well.
Yes. Okay, we had minutes in the packet. Dates on the agenda here. It was last month. Any corrections, anything's noted on the minutes that were in fact?
I noticed that this morning that I didn't put the date, which I always do. So I threw you a curveball, I guess.
So what was it, October?
It was September twenty-fifth.
September. Okay, nothing, nothing very no comments, and we will deem them approved as presented to September twenty-five, two thousand twenty-three minutes.
We'll go ahead with the, go through the formalities here, give opportunity for any requests from the floor, anybody who is in the room. Virtually, if you have any comments to make to the Planning Commission tonight for non-agenda items. Now is your time to speak up, and if you're on Zoom, click the raise hand button, wait to be recognized. If you're on telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and then wait to be recognized.
You don't have any attendees.
That's kind of what I suspect. All right, we'll move to the Director's Report that was in the packet. Any questions for Kelly or comments, clarifications? Appreciate it.
Yeah, just so you know, we're gonna try to at least quarterly have code enforcement updates for development services, so that'll be a new addition that you'll see on a quarterly basis, similar to what was in the packet tonight. We'll continue to have conference plan updates as we progress to the finish line, hopefully the first half of next year. Obviously, the current planning, which is less than it typically is because of the moratorium. And then I was gonna explain that on, I didn't put this in the report, but I was gonna just give a couple-minute update on it. As I believe you know from an email I sent, wanna say two weeks ago, that on November twentieth, the City Council did approve a new resolution to extend the moratorium another six months. We're currently working with, we did all our stress test analysis, it's all been submitted to the EPA and DQ, I think there was over three thousand pages submitted. And they've actually, within about forty-five days, turned around comments to us, which was pretty fast, honestly, because they had to go through a three thousand-page document. And they have about thirty pages of comments, I think, that now our Public Works Department, the engineering firms we've hired, are working closely with EPA and DQ to kind of resolve those outstanding questions or potential issues. And so we anticipate that hopefully that will only take a couple of months. And then we're hopeful that in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-four, we'll have an updated number of ERUs, and if we can modify the moratorium further. We're not, we're not at a point at this point, based on preliminary analysis, where we're gonna altogether lift the moratorium. But we are hopeful based on the analysis, the preliminary analysis that we're not only gonna have a lot more ERUs, but that potentially the moratorium can be modified so that there's some limited land use permits that could be submitted as well. And that's what I've been sharing with people in the public. We don't know the exact timing, and we don't know the numbers yet, because that's, that's kind of what's being negotiated between our engineers and the federal government now.
And when does that six-month extension take it to?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. So even though they did it on November twentieth, it was actually for the extension that occurs on November, on December twentieth. So they just did it like a month early. So if there's no decision or the analysis not kind of negotiated, it could go out to June twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. I don't anticipate it will, like, that's not what we're anticipating at this point.
So are you report on DeBarco Road and that house addition, is that that house at the corner of DeBarco and Love?
It is, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, I thought I saw something earlier about that.
Yeah, and there's, you know, there's a retaining wall built really close to the creek, I think based on some evaluations that have been done by some engineers is that we think it's fine to stay there. In fact, if you, if you removed it, it might actually do more damage at this point, since it's been there for like thirty years or twenty-five years, whatever. There are some other imperments, like a shed and some turf and some other stuff that will have to be removed, because that's where eventually the trail will go through. Yeah, unfortunately, that's what I tried to express to the builder there is unfortunately, when they plotted that lot, and I think Jerry, you, you have a, you know what happened here. They kind of, that one lot on the end, they kind of really squeezed in there. And so where that individual's house is, there's just not much distance to their back property line and where, where the creek is. Like now, if we were plotting that subdivision, that last lot most likely would have never been allowed to be plotted.
My, my house.
Your house probably the same thing, yeah. Yeah, but your house, the difference is like the trail goes away from your house, so there's plenty of room to put the trail back in there. Down by this individual's house, unfortunately, the city only owns like a fifteen-foot linear swath through there, so there's, there's nowhere else but the trail. If there was, we'd likely be working with the property owner to sell them some property and go down that road instead, because we've done that with other people, where we have a really wide area that we can put a trail, but unfortunately, that's just not the case there.
Yeah. How would that trail, it's a little bit off subject, it would end up on the, get up on the, hop on the road?
It would, yeah.
And then down the sidewalk.
Yeah, so you'd still, you'd still come out, at least for now, to the corner across town. But instead of going out in front of that bank of, I don't know what it is, five or six houses, you could, you could, if you chose, chose to, stay on the trail and go behind them, by the creek essentially. And that, that's what's been kind of a long-term vision, and it's in the Parks Mass Plan that way, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Is there an update on December meeting at all?
For Planning Commission?
Yeah.
I mean, at this point, I don't have anything that we would have on it. The hard part always with the December one with when you guys meet is it's always right at Christmas, basically. So like in years past, we have had like a meeting some years, and it's like in the middle of the month, I know.
Yeah, move it up earlier.
Yeah, but I, at this point, I don't have anything. You do have a work session next Monday with the council on, or on housing policies and the H and A. And then in January, you will have the clear and objective audit to review and give a recommendation to council. But I, I don't believe there'll be a, a January PC, or a, I'm sorry, a December.
The fourth time this is.
Christmas in that city hall.
Right. Well, Commissioner Maiteon is in the room. Any any information to pass on to us, or does any of the commissioners have any questions of City Council?
Well, hi, Plan and Commission, well, Kelly did a great job, I was just gonna mention the moratorium extension that the City Council passed. He did a great job with it, so I can skip by that. The other thing I would bring up is that we were given a feasibility study on the community campus annex building last week, so, you know, different configurations that annex building could be used into, which will lead to future, you know, building development in front of that, when those other, you know, when the, when the pool gets taken down, but not really yet, and then my only plugin would be, please get out there for the Sandy Christmas tree lighting, which I believe is Friday night. I'm pretty sure it's the first, I'll double-check that before I get off, so, any questions for me?
You just need a red hat and a tassel.
I'll save it at the end of December. And I do have a red hat in the other room, I'll go get it.
Well, thank you. All right, well, we'll move right on to the, the new business is the, we're going to a work session. Kind of interesting to not have a formal public hearing tonight. So I'll turn it over to Patrick.
Sure.
And we will, we'll go from there, tell us what, what we can do and how.
So this is kind of picking, backing up what Kelly had just outlined a little bit of what's ahead of us. And so I kind of just took a lot of those upcoming events, I know you guys have been tapped into it as far as doing the work sessions, joint work sessions with City Council, and kind of following what the consultants have been doing, and Kelly's, I'm sure, keeping you updated before I got here, and I'm saying that because I've only been here two months now. But yeah, coming into this and seeing just kind of what's ahead of us, and, and how much work that's already been done, kind of work that I think is coming to a close, that the consultants are putting together findings will help with the staff report, and ultimately looking for your recommendation for these legislative agenda items going forward, we're gonna have kind of a you know, a busy, maybe even intense type schedule. And at the same time, there's been a bunch of lingering code amendments that we've run into that believe that, you know, is good time to kind of start addressing these as we're doing code amendments with the clear and objective, kind of bring them all together, and maybe kind of feather them in. But part of doing code amendments is sometimes they can be take me really simple and kind of be addressed and amended relatively quickly, some take a little bit more conversation, debate on where we're going. And I think part of what we try to do here is look to you guys for a little bit of guidance and, and how you want us to bring some of these items, because we could, we can work on some of these and bring some of these very quickly. Some can be, I think, disposed of, discussed and, and and agreed upon relatively quickly, some might go a meeting or two, such as outline the, the sign ordinance or, or chapter is quite long, there's quite, quite a few amendments going on there. But, but smaller stuff like a retaining wall or utility thing, we could even group some of those together. So I think what we're kind of, what me and Kelly have been talking about and asking is, is when we start to to schedule some of these things, and we're looking at our housing needs analysis, and I know you've been keeping up with the work sessions, just getting some feedback on, on how you, how you feel about us when we're dealing with a large item like a housing needs analysis recommendation. Do you feel that you're, you're like, well apprised of what that document is, is about, and, and I know you've got a lot of the work sessions, you feel there's gonna be a lot of conversation there where we should focus on those meetings just being specific? Housing needs analysis, economic opportunities analysis, those specific meetings, or if we kind of feel like some of these are smaller, shorter conversations, bringing those along. Because the clear and, clear and objective standards, you're gonna get a two hundred and ninety-four page, you know, development code with just changes all, all throughout it. And I don't know if that's gonna be too overwhelming, or you want us to take some of that, you know, kind of piecemeal to discuss it, or is there a lot of faith that's been done in the consultants and the work sessions and the PowerPoint presentations that they've done, where you feel pretty confident that your questions or inquiries have been already addressed? Because I've gone through housing needs analysis where we've taken, you know, two or three meetings to go through them. Partially because they're just questioning certain things and, you know, have their own input, and so we just kind of, kind of wanted to gauge where you guys are at, kind of give us some feedback on how we have all of this, and then obviously we have the comprehensive plan, policies, goals and objectives that I know are gonna come from that. That I would probably say have no code amendments on those discussions, because they're kind of separate and keep our mind focused on, on separation between a comprehensive plan and the development code. But on the clear and objective and housing needs analysis, economic, economic opportunities analysis, do you mind just bringing some of these code amendments to you to, to discuss? We're just trying, like I said, trying to get some feedback, we don't, you know, we can certainly adjust this as we go along as well, so you know, if you feel uncomfortable with, with some of these last work sessions that you're gonna be involved with, I think even like, like next week's, the housing needs analysis, if you guys feel like you got a really big grasp of that, and don't feel like that's gonna take up a lot of time or discussion during a meeting, we can, we can bring some of these other code amendments to discuss, they won't necessarily be a public hearing, like the clear and objective, maybe the housing needs analysis as it goes forward in January. We can have just kind of discussions of these, like introductions, and then if we, if we come to a consensus on it, then we can just do the public hearing meeting or notice for the next meeting. So we won't be like having two public hearings at the same meeting. Well, we'll have like our public hearing for some of these important plans, and then we'll have maybe a discussion afterwards. But if you feel like that's like too much, or maybe take us too late into the evening, we'll wait and see what the schedule is on some of these bigger plans and they may be introduced by different times, so.
Yeah, and I mean, I think some of these code amendments, we've entertained making modifications still for years now. Urban forestry standards, for example, we had like a subcommittee that kind of flopped, to be honest, and then COVID hit, so it never was enacted again. I didn't really feel personally it was a very good committee, because how the council wanted it at the time was, you know, have have environmentalists on this committee and also have bullbears on this committee and kind of let them duke it out at the table, well, it didn't really work. You have people that want this, you know, only tree retention, and people that only want to knock every tree down. How are they ever gonna come to a middle ground? And they didn't, they never even got close to coming to a middle ground, so I, I think moving forward, I would just like the Planning Commission to discuss urban forestry and make those decisions, and when we go to a hearing or a work session, the public or, or environmentalists, whoever want to, can come and speak at the podium to you and give you their thoughts. But I think how we had it set up before was they were kind of the decision-makers, and the code, the code never progressed, so I I want to get away from that. I also think it's hard enough to staff, or not to staff, but to have boards and commissions that are volunteer-based, that have people committed to continue to come to those. I think it's really hard to, in addition to that, have other subcommittees. I mean, Jerry, you know from serving on the Conference of Plan Citizen Advisory Committee, at fifteen members, and I think we have like four or five that actually show up on a regular basis. And so while I think the idea behind having all these subcommittees and other groups that meet is a great idea, I think in reality, people just aren't that interested in serving on those. So I think we have seven people that I are very interested in serving and that are already on the commission, and you guys have more knowledge on how the tree code works or could work than I think the subcommittee could anyways. And you'll be the ones implementing it through development permits, so I think it just makes sense to have you guys review it. And so that's, that's how I'm looking at proceeding with it. I think, you know, just to go through a few of these other ones, that, you know, Patrick put together a complete list on pages two and three. There's a few on here that I know we talked about a decade ago, I think, I went back, I think retaining walls and fences. I think we had like a work session in two thousand thirteen or fourteen, I found it. Yeah, so you were here, Jerry, I was here. And we talked about like having retaining walls that are higher, if they have a setback with the fence and everything. Patrick and I have been talking about it, and I don't know what happened, you know, maybe I dropped a ball on that, I don't really know, but it never moved forward. And so there was like a work session, we discussed it with the Planning Commission, I just found like the minutes and everything. It's like, after that, there's nothing, and I'm like, what happened to that? Like, it just kind of fell off the map. And so there's things even like that, that we, we need to revisit, like, we get requests every year, dozens of them about, you know, oh, my property has a big slope on it, and therefore I need the retaining wall and fence height to be like two feet higher. Well, right now, the only way to do that is a variance procedure, which costs sixteen hundred dollars, that had to come before the commission. And so that, I think there's, there is some things in our code like that, for example, which I don't think is a practical way of doing this necessarily with all our topography here. So there's just things like that where we, we've talked about them before, we, we need to come back together as a group and discuss some more. There's some things on here that were more recently initiated by City Council or city administration, like temporary use and structures, they want us to dive more into that. The City Council wants us to dive more into forfeitures and fees. They want to increase the fees for non-compliance on code enforcement, and they want an escalation, so a lot of cities do this. So if it's like their tenth tenth violation of getting a fine for it, it's gonna cost you more than the first one is, is basically the essence of it. And so a lot of cities already know that Sandy doesn't have that in our code. So if you're a repeat offender, you just get the same violation as the first time. And then if you, if you look through our procedures for code enforcement throughout the code, I think our new code enforcement officers identified like I, I don't know how many, but I think it's somewhere in between fifteen and twenty-five different procedures, depending on what code section you're in. That should probably be narrowed down to about three. So there, there's just a lot of work in the code that needs to be done. You know, I think as Patrick said, kind of determining, I think, with the help of, from you guys of how do we want to group these together? Do you want to see some of them like two or three at a time, just some do you think are big enough? Probably like the urban forestry section that should be on its own. And then like Patrick also said, like, we're gonna be coming up with like clear and objective audit in January, comp plan stuff, H and A, HPS that I know, Jay, you're familiar with, the housing production strategy with Hospital Two Thousand Three, we're gonna be going through that process. And so we're trying to gauge like, are those meetings, should those meetings be set aside just for that topic? Or do you think there's some things on here that we could bring a code section to you on the same night? So we can kind of knock two things out at once, since we're already meeting or already all here.
Yeah, maybe that, because we've, we've got a few new House bills, Senate bills, they're talking about introducing residential development in commercial districts, that we're gonna have some interaction, you know, that some, some of this code work might start addressing that to that we're, because we're forced to allow that, and we're gonna have clear objective, but how does that interact, and how are they supposed to coexist, you know, without having any type of you know, things that, that maybe be in conflict with each other. So I think we'll start looking at some of those things too, as we go forward, because we have to, and that's gonna, that's coming out of the clear and objective standards as well, so. And then even I would just, I wanted to bring this up because it was kind of interesting, when I was looking at one of the earlier PowerPoints that the consultants did, when we were talking about tree removals or urban forestry standards, just some simple fixes, like adding new exceptions for tree removal from city-owned parks, a natural area for trail installation, maintenance, safety improvements, the reason why I bring it up is because we had two land use plans where we charged Parks and Rec eight hundred bucks to review it, because our, the code required us to take them through that process, when there could be some exemptions that, again, we would bring, bring to you guys to see if, you know, they were valid. But, you know, going between departments and certain situations where something needs to be expedited or get done, but they're held up because they have to go through a fourteen-day public note, you know, notice or something, where they can just do it on administrative. At least, I think a couple of things like that, that I think is just, you know, is, is general housekeeping, but I think it, it helps department, it will help the certain departments work together better, faster.
On the sign code, if you look at that section, that has not been updated, I don't believe, since two thousand eleven. I've been actually working off and on because I never have enough time to really dive into it all the way, but I've been working it off and on since two thousand twenty. And I think we're at a point where I could basically bring some of the next couple of months, it is awful, the sign code is awful, it's there's dozens probably of First Amendment violations in it that I have not been enforcing, since I've been the director at least, we've been ignoring them at the advice for attorney. But the sign code is just a dizzying purple, it's, it's way more complex than it needs to be for both the people that live in town, sign companies that help those people, and even for my staff to administer, like it really could be simplified, and so I know in the past, when they've done site code revisions, they've only brought those to the City Council. I don't think the Planning Commission's ever reviewed those. And that's because it's outside of chapter or title seventeen. However, this time going through it, I want Planning Commission to be, even if you're not, as a commission, you're not making decisions on the sign code, I want your expertise and your advice on the code amendments, so I want to bring it to you for like your recommendation of what you think, and I want to get your feedback, and then I'll bring it to council after, but I think the city staff is really kind of missed an opportunity, I would say, to have a second review body kind of look at those standards in the past, and I want to change that going forward. So going forward, we're also gonna have things come before you, like if there's changes to dark sky ordinance, or there's changes to the grading erosion control section, I want that all coming before you guys, even though technically it doesn't have to, I want it to before it goes to the council. So that we have an official recommendation from a body that they can then entertain and kind of analyze.
Glad to hear you say that about the signs, because as I read through it, it just seemed way too much.
The sign code is I don't want to be overly critical of whoever wrote it, but it, it's been, it was written very poorly, I'll just be honest, and I think what happened is over time, different employees at the city tried their best to make modifications to certain sections to make it better. But as you probably know with codes, unless you do a comprehensive look at the whole thing, like one section of the sign code is now contradicting another section of the sign code, because they won't, weren't updated at the same time. So it's, yeah, if you, yeah, if you look at it and have questions, just ask, because it's a really poorly written code. So we will be bringing that one, I, I would, you know, from the recommendation section that Patrick put together on page three, that has some different questions for you guys to go through tonight. I would really prefer to move the sign code sooner rather than later, because I do have something that's pretty close to the final product for you to see. And because I think it is so poorly done, that I think it's a disservice to continue using this old code, I really do. I know my staff has been asking for the past two or three years if we can adopt the revisions, so it's, it's overdue, I would say. So I don't know if you want to jump to page three to the recommendation section and kind of go through some of those questions.
No.
So the first question is, are there any sections, and this is about the development code or the municipal code in general, so the entire municipal code, are there any Entire municipal code, are there any sections or chapters that are typically part of a designer view or site plan review? That you believe are too restrictive, or maybe didn't go far enough to address the application?
That's a good question. I, I just find myself looking at, man, what, what's in the code? Trying to, to remember.
So I know, just for an example, I know in the past. Urban forestry. Was like a big one where I, I remember Ronnie and. Ca- Commissioner Lassowski when he was still on here. Saying like, we really need to change it because remember for a while, every subdivision had a variance request to it. And so like, okay, so obviously something's not working and we need to solve it um.
That's the one I was thinking of because even still, it seems like eighty-five, ninety-five percent of them do. Um, would this, would the purview of this also fall into? Maybe making it a little bit more user friendly, but also adding more teeth to it because it seems like right now. The penalty for not following it is pretty much what you're asking for. When you come in for the variance anyway, so you go, oops, my bulldozer accidentally hit that tree, my bad. And then you just go and do what you want to do anyways. So maybe making it. Little give and take on each side of it, making it something that's. Uh, more friendly to allowing the house to be built, but also. You don't follow the rules, there's kind of big consequences to it.
I, I think both of those, yeah.
Yeah.
I would agree. And. Yes, we've, we've had people accidentally. And I say that with air quotes. Uh, damaged trees during development that. There's no way of proving that they did it on purpose, but I think there has been a few cases where. They've done that cost benefit analysis and they determine, well, it'll be a thousand dollars a tree. We'll pay it and move on, yeah.
Yeah, especially now that we have the ability to go out and enforce these types of things and look at them. You know, I've driven through things and go, that's no ways that fence that's leaning up against the tree. The proper distance around the roof structure. I was like, no way is that actually being protected. You know, and so I think now's the time to adjust it, that we can actually do something about it.
I've also seen something too, and I, and just want to maybe get a little. Kind of idea of what you guys are thinking of this. Um, because I've seen some, some newer developments that we've gone out at. Kelly's taking me around to look at stuff. And um. Some of the tree retention. Looks really odd because these trees are gorgeous, they're mammoths, they're giants, they're, you know, seventy, eighty, hundred feet tall. And there's two together in a subdivision, in a. Subdivision of. Could be twelve, twelve lots, fifteen lots. And they stand out. They're just two huge trees. And they were part of the tree retention of what they did because they were kind of maybe the only ones that were. Not where a building pad would go. So we're like, oh, we're going to save these two. And some of them have got damaged, some of them have died, um, just as you were saying, uh, maybe on purpose or. By, by nature um. But from my standpoint, just coming in, in, from an outsider and, and looking at this. Um, that I just, I just don't see the benefit in having two hundred foot trees by houses. We're getting, people that move in say, is this safe? And um, our bridge will say, sure, it's safe, you know, they're, they're well established. But I've also seen in, in multiple cases where once you take that tree stand away. They're a lot more vulnerable than you think because they don't have that windbreak on them. When they're, when they're all together, you got, you kind of got that collective strength. But when you take a lot of that away, and so I'm just wondering if that's something that we look at as. And I don't know if it means maybe even losing a lot, if, if we want to be that strict. But I think, you know, losing a lot and keeping an actual tree stand for. Some open space area is better than having a whole. Development where they're only um, required to keep three trees. And they keep three trees right in the middle and, and similar things happen just like that because. Been here a short time and what I've done, maybe three, four tree removal things and, and it's. I mean, it, it just doesn't make sense to me from being in from an outsider. I love trees. I love to save them. But it's got to be done logically. It's can't say, well, we're going to save trees, we're going to save these two trees because they're not in a building pad. I would rather say you're doing a subdivision and we got twenty percent open space and you're going to have to lose a lot. You know, that's what it's going to take to save the stranded cheap trees that have a better success. Better, you know, uh, success of surviving than two trees out in the middle of nowhere, um, or not in the lower, but in the middle of a, uh. Of the subdivision. I mean, for, to me, it looks odd, but I still think it's, it's not, I don't think it's um. Just a prudent way to save trees, you know, I think you, you'll have more success if you group them together and. And, and if you do that, as a lot of these. As long as these developments are going in and you've got one development and you've got another one going right next to it. You got that opportunity to maybe somewhat um, pin these two. Areas of open space together that to actually be more like a quantitative useful. Santa trees rather than just sporadically one here, two here, three here. I mean, I'm not sure if I'm making, saying that clearly enough, but just from an outsider, outsider, I've kind of seen that. Just like, yeah, these, you know.
Do you think that would be a deterrent for developers or will we just be faced with more variance requests? If we say, because they're going to, oops, I knocked that one down, the rest have to go. Um. I mean, obviously the retaining wall, we've had that before where they want variances, but that's come across the desk several times in the last year. And. I'm just wondering if we amend the codes to make them more strict and say this is what it is. Are we just going to keep getting those requests for variances? Over and over again, or will they just go, okay, well, this is what's required. So this is what, this is what we'll do and. It's kind of one of those things where we can change it and have different rules, but if they want to push, they're going to push and then.
Well, they're, they're, right now, I think they're only required to save three trees per acre. So. You know, you can get. You know, eight, ten lots per acre in there and. Saving three, you know, saving three trees. Um, yeah, they are, they are going to be. Kind of awkwardly placed or they're just going to pick, pick the street, the three strategic trees that are not. You know, in the location where they want to build, for a building fat.
I mean, I don't mind making the developers jump through the hoops if that's what we require. Um, it just seems like we have the codes, they come, they want to do a variance. There's always a variance, a variance on top of the variance, on top of the variance, and so. Um. If we could lock it down a little bit more and maybe we would get a less, less. Pushback and, oh, but can we just do these five trees? Oh, but can we just do those five trees? Oh, but there's eleven required. But we want to take eight because it blocks what you require for the parking lot. It's like a push and pull sort of thing with the rules.
So I, I think it's a good conversation because I mean, it could be. Where um, I mean, right now we do. We do allocations for parkland. They got to do a certain amount of area for parkland and, and we've been. You know, doing the fee and loo of that and moving certain parkland over to more consolidated area. But we're keeping these three trees or something. And I, and I know, just, I think, I heard that even, uh, you know, certain people are. You know, whether it's planning commission, city council are very adamant about tree retention. And will push back, but I mean, at some point, saving three or saving three trees. Well, you know. Is maybe not as prudent as requiring them to plant nine trees over here. You know, three for one or something. Because now you're going to have a place, you know, yeah, you're going to lose a seventy foot tree, but now you're going to get a place where you may have. You know, a group of trees is going to, going to stand there forever because there won't be no development there. That's going to be part of a comment, so. I mean, I think there's a lot of conversation to be had um, on this. With different scenarios and I, I think we probably need to have that discussion because like I said, I think. I think you get a lot of the, we'll save these three trees, but the roots are damaged. In the development, you know, in the land balancing. Um. I think you're going to see that over and over again. So what are we doing? You know, let's, let's do it more proactively rather than reactively because it seems like, like we've reacted on like three different. Uh, land use files lately for, for uh, tree removal. And they're beautiful trees, but they're, you know, the ones we've been taking out. They were saved, but now they're, they're dead and they're dangerous. When they're dying, they're even more dangerous, so. Just something to think about.
I think sometimes on that issue, we can lose sight of the goal. Or, or we have our own goals as you were saying, saying Kelly, but. To some, the goal is to never, never cut a tree. Ever. And. Others that you said would, would cut everything down, I think that the, to me. The, the goal should be more of what, what is it that you want the, the look to be? I think for one thing on trees, we're all very impatient people. And we'd much rather retain a hundred year old tree and I'm not saying. Do that, but, but retain it because. Planting a new one that's going to be in a better place. Better location, better look. Is perhaps beyond my lifetime. And I'm not, I'm, I'm not uncomfortable with that. I think that's fine. My grandkids will enjoy it. But some of it, we just do it. So I, I like this thought about. Rather than necessarily trying to save everything is what's, what's the end product? What's the goal for this neighborhood to look like? And if it means that we plant new trees, that it's not going to look that way in ten years. But in thirty years from now, Sandy's going to have a nice little place. And then nobody will want to cut those trees because they were placed there. With some force on, but yeah, it's what, what, what's our, what are we trying to accomplish?
And I think three trees per acre is way too little. I mean, I would, that. Even when these are hard for trees, you know, hard year old trees, I mean. You know, I think a developer would feel more comfortable knowing that if he's going to take down. You know, he, he gives us a tree survey. If he's going to take down fifty trees, he's got to replace it with, he's either going to pay for it or, or. Replace it with, you know, fifty trees somewhere else. Um. And. Every place, every city I've worked back in Michigan was minimum two and a half, three inch caliber. Every place I've been here, worked here in Benton County and then come in here is an inch and a half. I'm like, there's tree places out here that have two and a half, three inch trees. Let's make him give a little bit more start where they're, they're going to be, you know. They have a little bit better chance that we'll take off. Maybe, and maybe that's something we discuss. And maybe we bring an arborist to, to back that up. I don't know if that, you know, is a good idea or bad. I've seen it work. But again, all these trees, they, any tree you plant's got a, got a year or two year warranty on them. So if they die, you just replace them, but um. But I think if a developer knows something upfront of what they need to do, it's easier for them to develop that. Um, and to try to maneuver their development around trees that. You know, they have to, they're, they're required to save rather than doing something that. They can re, they can replace more trees, you know. Because all they do is just factor that into their overall development and it, and it pays off, so. But that's one topic. So we got, we got lots to, to go over and, and I see a lot of these will take. You know, a whole session to kind of go through and talk, talk through. Maybe we do have some specialists or maybe, maybe at that point we. Have some, some concerned citizens, so um.
I, I think the tree, the urban forestry one is probably a set of meetings. Probably at least two work sessions would be my guess, maybe three.
Because would that include um. Like uh, commercial, what's the word I'm looking for um. Visual blocking. Site.
Buffering. It certainly could. I don't think it necessarily has to.
That's one of the things I think that's come up, at least the majority of our commercial type projects. That we've seen so far, or at least that I've seen so far.
I mean, I think, I think one of the problems with the tree retention sentence that we have is there's no. Minimum lot size requirements associated with them. So you can do the, you can do the two big trees on a six or seven thousand square foot lot. Which is a problem, obviously. And so I think, I think part of the issue is like. There's nothing in the code that relates tree retention and size of tree to minimal lot size. And I think that's, I think that's where it's kind of missing. Is what we get now is a lot of seventy-five hundred square foot lots. With eighty foot tall dub firs on them. And the dub first fifteen feet from the house foundation. And the dig out went even closer, so yeah. Of course, the root zone has been compromised, so. I think that's one of the big issues, to be honest, is like we're not relating our tree retention to lot size. So in addition, or. So we know tree retention is one of them. I heard retaining walls, which I would agree that's, and that's on our list of like. Once we want to look at further, is there other ones that you can think of like during subdivisions or? Even the park review that we did recently or any, or any other reviews since any of you have been on here. Jerry's been on here so long that there's probably lots, but.
So are you thinking that there's some that might be quick to do? I was thinking like drive-through requirements. That's probably a lot easier and. Um, maybe even the cell towers. I don't know how complicated that would be.
I would agree. I think both those are on the easier to do list. Yeah.
We could wipe out a couple of those easy ones.
It would be nice to dwindle the list down quicker, I think. Kind of a small victory.
Yeah.
Okay, we had like ten things and we got like five of them done in the first like six months.
How, how does this um. Play out time wise with the clear and objective? I was if some of the, if, if we're looking at existing code. That has been analyzed on a clear and objective, but hasn't passed. Would, would the code that you be bringing to us? Have the clear and objective changes if they're, they are present as well as the. Changing in the verbiage or?
So the clear, the clear objective will be coming before you in January. So that will be the main thing to look at that night. Like we're not going to bring one of these with her.
Okay, so that, that ideally will be behind us at that.
It will hopefully go before city council for adoption in February. So hopefully when we're bringing more to you. The hope is, is that that's kind of all done, that it's adopted.
Oh, and it's mostly pertaining to residential too.
The, the most, yeah.
To residential. I mean, we're still going to probably look, look at these through that lens. You know, because that's, I mean, that's the best way to get a good code is, is to make it clear objective. But the, the whole clear and objective audit was mostly based on residential.
Okay.
Um, house bills and stuff, so. This would be a little bit outside of that, but, but I think it's going to be that same philosophy of lens or lens to look through.
We'll kind of do our own clear and objective.
Yeah.
It, it is a good point though, because like urban forestry, for example. That does have some clear and objective modifications on that code section. And then even like the one that Patrick brought up, the tree removal for parks maintenance exemption. So there will be some things, like if you looked at the code today and started using that. It's already old because it doesn't incorporate the changes we're going to be bringing.
Well, it sounds like you wouldn't be bringing any of those to us until after. The clear and objective that's cleared anyway.
I, I agree. I think to Commissioner Weinberg's point. The, the clear and objective audit didn't touch the major utilities, salt towers. It didn't touch drive-throughs. So those two chapters are untouched by it. I, I, I'm pretty sure. Um, it didn't touch so, signs. So like those kind of chapters, we can.
Yeah.
Move forward with them. Even if that's not adopted yet.
Hey, we have something to do on Christmas now.
You really want to meet on Christmas, it's so strict.
So any of these adaptations of these codes going forward with the legislative bills with the affordable housing and the imposition of.
Residential zoning wherever. I know you've said we've got inquiries from Colorado, I believe in the past. How can we, if it's something we're interested in doing, kind of build around to kind of make it less appealing? I suppose to kind of be forced almost to adapt to the legislative laws. Without losing. Our say in development of the city. Is that, is there any path going forward where we can kind of not change it, but kind of steer around so we get a say? Even if the state forces us to enforce these certain things. I think that's where my focus will be where I would hope that maybe. By amending some of these or changing them or rewriting them. That we could kind of retain just a smidge of control and say in our own city. Of what's being forced upon everyone.
Only thing I know of for exemptions are you have to relate it back to, um, environmental protection. So you could always increase your buffers to creeks and wetlands. You can increase, and they do, I did talk to the state about this. They do consider tree retention in environmental regulation. Hillside protections, because that's for like landslides and stuff like that. Yeah, you definitely can do that. They, they're. The one I would really encourage the city to move forward on at some point is creeks and wetland protections. Cause those are where kind of our best ecosystems exist anyways locally. And the state's been very clear that that is one of the few limitations we can still do with all the new house bills. The, the other one is historic districts. Uh, but Sandy doesn't have one, so. And we wouldn't qualify. We don't have any, we don't have like a district like Silverton or like, um. We, we just don't have enough historical housing to qualify for district. I actually worked in a city before that had a district, Coburn. And I think. I think every, I think it was two out of every three houses at the time at least were considered historic. So built prior to, I think nineteen thirty-two or something like that. So Sandy doesn't. We might have like. Fifty houses that were built prior to that in the whole city. But are still standing.
One other thing that might play into the forestry is I know there are new rules. For setbacks and so forth under the Forest Practices Act. I don't know how much of that would apply to a city.
I don't think it would, but you, that would be a good like area to look at what they're implementing. And then seeing how, what out of that we want to implement with.
Might just have some problems along typical grade.
I don't think we've mentioned a lot, but I've heard a few times at city council, but lot sizes and setbacks. I don't know if that's something we really wanna. You really wanna dig into. I just know it's something that has come up. I don't have a particular desire to, because that's, I know there's pluses and minuses to it.
So the two things, so you'll learn a lot more about that on December fourth. But what I can tell you is, so you, you all know about bench reporting nine claims, I think at this point. Like somebody could do a taking this claim. In addition to that, this, the legislature and, and I think you know about this. Is likely to pass House Bill three, four, one, four. Which is called, some people are calling it the variance bill. It's basically gonna make lot sizes in Oregon, minimum lot sizes in Oregon. Not applicable anymore.
Um, the governor will be pushing some new things in the short session starting in February.
So I, I've been told House Bill three, four, one, four is like ninety-five percent chance passing at this point. Like it's, it's basically going to be passed. Like they, I think they've already done some work to determine who's gonna vote against it. And there's just not the numbers to turn it down, I don't think. So that with Sandy could do a lot of work on minimum lot sizes, setbacks. Once House Bill three, four, one, four is passed. We have to grant the, we have to grant the variances for setbacks and lots of these. Like, we can still make them go through the variance procedure. But we can't deny it. So that, yeah, you, you'll learn more on December fourth from Kerry Richter, who's. Gonna be presenting to the planning commission city council. And she's gonna be talking about that bill.
Like duplexes, they no longer consider attached. They could be detached.
Well, we already have that in our code. Yeah. This bill's like the variance bill though. It, it was even more aggressive like a year ago, and then they kind of stripped it down a little bit. To appease some people that didn't want to pass it. Um, but I've heard it's at the point now of likely going to be passed. Now, if it's not passed, then I think we could look at that more. But I think if it's passed, my advice, and I think you'll hear from the attorneys I'll be speaking to is. If there wouldn't be a lot of sense in passing at that point. Cause the legislation would just overrule it. So that I'm, I'm sure when we start talking about that next Monday night, that's gonna be, um. An interesting conversation. I think that'll be a very in- interesting conversation. We're. We're hoping to probably spend a good twenty minutes or thirty minutes talking about that bill. Yeah, because. That's for housing, like Patrick was talking about, it's not gonna really matter what the, because it says on that kind of stuff. I don't know how it applies to density yet, just so you know.
I don't know much about that. I'll have to read up on that. Does it, from like what you gather, is, are they? Cause it can open up more. Developments of like townhouses, like attached. You know, they can be individually like sep- you know, separated.
Potentially. I think, I think the thrust of the bill is, from what I can read, from what I've read, and may, maybe you have a different opinion, Jan, on this, but. It's basically to. Allow for more housing in the same area. So it's kind of like piggybacking off of possible two thousand and one. It's like. You know, if we have a minimum lot size of seventy five hundred and the developer comes in and wants to do all the lots at six thousand and. It's allowing them to put basically more houses on the same pad site. So I don't know if it's really specifically going to allow different, or will promote different uses. Or even lower the cost of housing. I don't know if it'll do either one of those things, but it would allow more houses on the same model land.
And what about? Lot frontage, like frontage to a public railway.
Yeah, I think you can give a variance to that too. That, that's what, I think we can still charge for the variance. I don't know. We'll have to see how it all plays out, but.
They're gonna start allowing houses to be built behind houses to be built behind houses. And then you got an easement going through all the lots. And they don't have to have any frontage.
I've told other people, the state. Just try, is just getting us to put more and more people on less and less dirt.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get the point of some of the bills. I'm not saying I agree with them or don't agree with them. I've yet to see any cases though, that it's actually lowered the cost of housing. It, it could produce more housing. Which maybe that is the ultimate goal. I don't know, but I've heard some people at state level say it's gonna lower the cost of housing through like a supply and. Demand model, which hypothetically it will do, but I haven't seen that in the last four years since House Bill two thousand and one was adopted. Like housing prices have just gone up. There's been no decrease in housing costs.
Well, it only decreases when your demand decreases. And if your demand's not, if you can't fill enough to make, to make your demand decrease, which you can't right now.
But I hear the builder saying that some of those hearings is the state should help pay for some infrastructure. Because that's where the cost is really coming in. And now the state water resources department is shutting down on groundwater permitting. So cities are up in arms that they can't get new permits for groundwater, but the governor is pushing them for all this additional housing.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, that's what I hear from local builders too. It's, it's not. How many lots? It's not, it's not more of a, I, it's more of an infrastructure thing. It's like. The permitting costs and SDCs and everything, like since I bought two, they doubled. Like to get a permit of our counters doubled. That's more of their concern than how many houses they can put on the one acre of land. But I hear the same thing locally. Um, one other thing that Patrick put in here, I, I thought I'd just touch upon real fast is this. I'm not even sure if all of you are aware of this. Um, when Sandy style was implemented in two thousand and eight. I, I believe this was an oversight. I could be wrong. You might have more of a background to Jerry, but. I believe it was an oversight. There is no relation between size of building and same style. So right now, if you took, and we have not taken it to this degree, but if you looked at the Sandy style section seventeen ninety. In like the commercial zones, let's just use, for example, if you build. A two hundred square foot structure or a two hundred thousand square foot structure, the design requirement is the same. And so what, what, where that really becomes a problem, like roof slope, maybe a little bit, materials a little bit. But where it really becomes a problem is we require like all the faux stone, all the additional elements. And so like the Ace Hardware did that on that new structure. It looks beautiful over there. But that little structure also costs a hundred thousand dollars to build. And where we kind of looked the other way on that, I'll just be very honest, is by Sandy style, that structure should have had windows too. Because there is no exemption for accessory structuring related to size. Now, John, the word, the guy at ASI told him, we're, we're not gonna require windows on a building that's not even against the road. And that you have building supplies. I'm like, someone's gonna bust in there and steal it all. So he was very appreciative that we didn't require that. But if we would have just taken the. Code very strictly as it's written, it would have had windows and all in there too. So there's just even little things like that where I think it was not intentionally done in two thousand and eight. I think it was just not, I think it was an oversight. So there's things like that, that we, we believe Patrick and I believe it really may be changed as well.
So requiring a certain amount of Sammy's dial to our square footage on the frontage area.
Yeah, and I, and I think the building materials would still be the same, maybe even the roof pitch, or maybe it's a little bit less. But like not requiring windows on a storage shed and not requiring faux stone on a, you know, a building that. You might be able to see from the wide way, like the little one at Ace, but it's hundred feet plus off the road. It's like, I don't know. And obviously we'll just be referring recommendations to you on what we think works, but I think that's a good one that we should explore. Uh, in twenty twenty-four sometime.
One, uh, one question you did ask, I know is whether. For some input on prioritizing. A list and we kind of. I don't know that we helped with, with specific, well, maybe so some of the quicker ones could be done. Together. But I'm looking at the list, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be good to give consideration to those that were initiated by council. And administration, should they be moved to a higher priority?
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I.
Even if they're bigger ones, you know, the forestry one is, is a big one, but if that was initiated by city council, then we probably should. Get it done a little bit sooner than later.
No, something like that. We, we would only bring it on a month. That we don't have a public hearing or something that we're gonna do. So if we got that opening, you know, and again, we're not gonna throw a public hearing right at you. These are gonna be work sessions or, you know, discussions through them. Will be like, uh, you know, fillers, uh, you know. It's kind of where we're telling you, you're probably after December, we're gonna meet every month. Yeah, every single month, they're gonna be meeting. And, uh. I mean, I, have, have you always just had one, one meeting per month?
Meeting. And actually I was just gonna say that. I'll probably get shot, but that. We, we could, just speaking, you know, don't, don't hesitate to throw out the idea. For a second meeting, if it's a workshop oriented one. Uh, to, to answer your question, we have in the past, we have met twice a month, but it's usually almost always caused by. A continuation that we had, had to get done, or we, we had to continue it, continue it sooner because with the, the next. Month was already loaded and those, that's what was causing those. But in a more of a relaxed thing. I, I just say, you know, don't, don't hesitate to throw out the idea that we can't make it work. We can't make it work. But.
I always liked the idea of doing it like in the, in the slower months, like. First part of the year. Once you get to summertime, you don't want to do it because everybody's on vacation. Sometimes it's even hard to get a call. But when everybody, kids are in school, parents are, are home.
Weather's crappy.
Crappy, you know, more of an opportunity than, than certainly. But yeah, come June, no way, you know.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that we'd be open to do two every month, you know, January, February, March, April, but. Maybe once or twice after the first of the year, just. Others may say absolutely not, but that's.
Seems like you've been doing the, between the, the meetings and the work sessions. You've been, you've been quite busy with those here.
Works, this kind of a. Period right now with the comprehensive plan. That's throwing in a lot of work.
And there will be a few more on that still, just so you're aware. And I, you know, I, this is a volunteer based commission, so I, I try to be cognizant of that. I also some months already have four night meetings, so my wife would kill me if I had a third or six of them. Uh, I think actually once last year around budget, I had six night meetings in one month. And that was like. Way too much for me at least. But yeah, like if there's a month where we don't have anything on council agenda too, and we want to power through something, I'd be open to that as well.
Yeah, and even if, if it were, um. We knew that was gonna be short. You know, we knew it could be a two hour meeting.
So my guess is maybe this is a good question for the group. Would you prefer as a group? If they're like two, two and a half room meetings, so we're out by nine. Would you prefer to have like two of those in a month or one that goes to eleven? Okay, me too. After about nine thirty, I'm kind of done, just to be honest.
Right, right. And you get, it, it, well, although you were not talking necessarily public hearings, but a public hearing when it starts getting ten or eleven, you. You, you, you don't want to be there. And yet you know, you've cut it short, you're doing a disservice to the applicant. It's a tough one. Yet we're all kind of losing our sharpness by then.
Okay, that's what, that's, that's what I feel too. So I was, I was wanting to make sure I was not alone on that.
Same way, but it, you know, it's, we can get this done if we stay till nine thirty. Totally chill with that.
No, definitely you're at that. I was just saying, I, I know when I first started here. There seemed to be a lot more meetings that went really late. And I know we tried to get away from that over time. Um, there's even some commissioners over the last ten years that were saying, well, let's just continue. Like, once it hits ten thirty, let's stop. And I think we did a better job of doing that over time.
Now I always tell the story, but we, we have at least one set of minutes that span two dates.
I think you have at least two, because I think one of those happened last year. One went to like a quarter to one in the morning. And that's like, that's not. Okay, so we're all in agreement on that.
What seems a little worrisome to me is we're in the middle of our clear and objective ordinance changes and. Comp plan and in February, the legislature is going to come back for thirty-five days and do more. Keep screwing around the edges.
I mean, I think, so Patrick hinted at this earlier. I, I would agree though that. Whenever we can make it clear and objective, I think we should. I think that allows everybody to know what the expectations are. Now, what it's like design standards is really hard to write a clear and objective. So there's gonna always be some discretion in there. Uh, but I, I do agree with Patrick that I think even if the state's not requiring it for like commercial development, I think when we can, we should make. Uh, but I I do agree with Patrick that I think even if the states aren't requiring it for like commercial level, and I think when we can, we should make it clear and objective.
Because if they aren't requiring it now, then they assume.
Well, I I think, Jerry, you've been on here long enough that even we've had people come up and joke at the podium that you know, when the code says something like encourages. I think we've even had applicants say, well, thank you for encouraging me, but we're not going to do that. So I I just think wording like that, while I I get why it was put into codes, I I think eliminating that kind of wording is probably good.
Those are the words that the attorneys just
Yeah.
Let this go right straight to. But have you gotten the answers to your questions this evening that?
I think so. I mean, I I think part of it, um, is going to be playing it by ear. Obviously not wanting to overload you and 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 just feeling cognit cognitive of of when the, when the housing needs analysis, when these all start kind of hitting, um, because if there's just going to be the one meeting a month, you know, at first, um, the focus is going to be on all of this stuff, getting it through. But if we get through a couple and and you know, we see that they're going relatively quickly or or the works, the work sessions have got you to a point where you're very comfortable and you're recommending and and those meetings go a lot quicker. Then we'll we'll maybe start bringing your package or maybe suggest bringing, you know, having a second meeting somewhere, somewhere in there. Um, that lines up. I mean, these code changes, because the clear and objective is all code change, code changes, so code amendments, so just like these. So as as we go to do a formal adoption of it too, um, you know, they can be grouped together that way as well, I think.
That's, no, that's actually a good point. Yeah. So no, that's a really good point. So yeah, if we have different work sessions and then we determine we want to group quite a few of them for the hearings, we can do that as well. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just because they weren't grouped together at a work session doesn't mean they can't be at a hearing. That's actually, yeah, that's a really good point.
Well, yeah, I I think just playing it by ear, I think we just wanted to kind of probably already knew, and maybe it was just us being a little bit more cautious and letting, you know, there's a lot coming this year, certainly. Seems like to me from from being being new, um, I've gone through a lot of this stuff and it's um, some of it goes really quickly, some of it really takes a lot of, uh, attention to detail and and conversation. On the policies especially, I think you guys are going to have a lot of input on that. I know I, from my understanding, I know the the consultants are going to be bringing a lot of that to the table. But I hope that doesn't restrain anybody from it, you know, from looking at it from your perspective and adding more to it. You know, adding more value to it or bringing something completely new that's been missed. So there's going to be a lot of that too. So it's not going to be just, you know, oh, thanks for, thanks for giving this to us. And, you know, we agree and let's, you know, take a vote. A lot of it's going to be a very full and and, um, you know, full meeting going over this review and
Yeah, I think part, I think part of what we wanted to do tonight is just kind of have a little bit of a conversation, let you know, this is kind of what we're thinking about. It's like a work plan for the next year or maybe year and a half even. Um, because, you know, there are going to be other competing interests with this work. Um, so like the housing production strategy. Whatever comes out of future legislative sessions, and if we need to do code options of that, the comp plan.
Mass timber.
Mass timber plan, yep, mass timber code. And then, you know, hopefully, as as we talked about about an hour ago, hopefully within the next six months, there's going to be some modifications to the moratorium. And hopefully we'll have the opportunity to start receiving some land use submissions again. And what that will mean is more public hearings around those submissions. So as Patrick said, it's going to be kind of the these, these code updates are going to be kind of where we have time. But we just wanted to kind of start to have a dialogue with the commission on, here's what we're kind of thinking of now. What's your input on it? And, you know, it doesn't need to just be tonight either. If other people think of things after tonight and you want to email those to Patrick and I, we can kind of see where that would fit into this. And so if, you know, if you go home and in a few days you think, oh, this is something that's really been coming up the last few times, or hey, have we ever looked at addressing this part of the code? Please send it to us and we can look into it more and have a discussion with you. The only, the only thing I caution on that is you know, if you want to include like, um, Jerry and Jan on that, that'd be great since of the turn by Sherry now. I wouldn't include any more people than that, just because then we run into potential forum issues. It becomes kind of a conversation in the, you know. But yeah, I think it's just to kind of start this dialogue, let you know, here's kind of what we've been thinking about as far as the next year for work plan.
Yeah, it's good.
I know we haven't really actually had like just a work session about future code edits, and I I don't think a couple of years actually. I don't even remember when the last time was.
Haven't had the time.
Haven't, no. But yeah.
The luxury.
Do we know enough right now to to put together like a tentative schedule for the next meetings? Not not even like putting this even aside, but the H and A, the
Yeah, we could definitely try to do that.
The comprehensive plan, you know, just just a tentative thing of like when we think they're going to come.
Yeah, we could definitely try to put some together and let you guys know what we, it would be tentative, but, um, and ultimately with the city council ones, with like the work sessions, like, you know, I need to get that approved by the city manager and the the mayor. Uh, I mean, usually it's fine. We usually go with it, but, um, that, you know, our stuff at the planning level has competing interests with all the other stuff they're doing at the city level. But yeah, we, I think that's a great idea to put together kind of a tentative timeline for at least the first half of two thousand twenty four, so you kind of know what's coming down the line. And may, and maybe even actually we could maybe sneak a few of these in there. Um, I think I would like to do that.
Could be, yeah, I mean, maybe our first meeting in January, maybe introduce something to you that some of some of these plans, or, you know, where you feel more comfortable, you know, like, oh, we can get through this relatively quick. We understand it. We, you know, kind of know where we stand, or this is really confusing. We want to have more discussion about it.
Yeah, have some appetizers to the main course.
Yeah, it'll be interesting. I don't know for the January meeting. Just so you're all aware, I probably should have put this in update. It's like I think of these things after, or why read the name. Because of the nature of the clear and objective audit, we've determined that most zones need a measure fifty six notice about the code changes. And so instead of just excluding a few industrial zones, we're just going to mail everybody in city. So every single property owner um, will get a mailed notification of the clear objective audit changes. So you'll be getting one in the mail. And so that will go out to over four thousand properties. You know, there's quite a few people that own multiple properties, so I don't know, probably thirty five hundred different property owners, what my guess would be. Um, so based on that, you know, a certain percentage, probably ninety percent will just probably toss it in there recycling bin. But out of, you know, that ten or fifteen percent that take the time to read it and maybe think through it, I I don't know what kind of potential uh, attendance we could get in January, I just don't know. I have no idea. If nobody, we could get a film room. I have, I have no idea.
Just so you, it's just so you don't know.
What's that?
Wear fancy clothes.
I'm not a very fancy clothes type person, as you probably can see, so I'll probably be dressed similar, but yeah. It might be, it might be a dizzy in here. I don't, I don't know. I have no idea.
The workshop Monday, six o'clock?
Six. Yeah, I believe that's the case, yes.
And do they have regular, is it only an hour or is it?
Two hours.
Two hours, okay, so six P M is two hour session.
Yeah, and so so just so you kind of know what's going on with that, I've been putting it together. So about the first forty five minutes will be an overview. Well, the first about thirty minutes will be an overview of the housing capacity analysis. Just so you're all aware, the state had to do this, of course. They were always called housing needs analysis, so H and A. About a year ago, they changed it to a H C A, a housing capacity analysis. Why? I have no idea. But now, so now it's, you'll probably see it in the packet. It's called an H C A. It's the same thing as an H and A. There's no difference. So that will take up about the first half an hour of the presentation, and then there'll be like some questions. And so that'll be about the first forty five minutes. And then we have about the next hour, hour and fifteen dedicated to Carrie Richter, who's a land use attorney. She used to work for Burials during Hammond, our attorney's office back in two thousand two, two thousand three. And she is hired a lot of times by three J, our comprehensive plan consultant. So they hired her to come in and explain recent legislation, anticipated legislation, kind of limitations of what we can do with housing policies, so that when we take the H C A and move it forward to creating policies for the comp plan and like the block three, that planning commission, city council have kind of a better understanding of, based on legislation and court cases, this is kind of how we're limited. So that that's why it's a two hour work session. Because you'll be hearing from basically two different presenters. And yes, it begins at six P M. Sure.
I had a question. Were you assigned ordinance? I was noticing that there's supposed to be a sign review committee. Do we actually have a sign review committee?
So we don't. So when I, when I started here, we had a sign variance committee. And then we also had an A frame science committee. Participation was always difficult. So shortly after I became the director in the department, I asked the mayor and the city manager at the time, can we basically just not have those anymore and just refer everything to the city council? And that's what we've done at the last seven years. Is if there's a sign variance request or any sign thing where they want an approval that I can't grant, we just bring it to council and we get maybe one every year, about one a year. So it's, it was just, it's another example of it's just really hard to maintain all these different committees. And sometimes I I think moving forward for the sign code, what I'd recommend is actually variance to come before the commission instead of the council, just to remove like that from their responsibilities and granted bestow that power to you.
Any discussion about bringing the sign ordinance into title seventeen?
Uh, the only problem with that is then it can be subject to a Luba appeal. That's why it's never been brought in. Because then it's, we talked to our attorney about that several years ago, and he didn't want to do it because that's why a lot of cities don't have it in their development code, is then it could be subject to a Luba kill.
What else can we move out of title seventeen?
Exactly. There probably is something, I'm sure. That's why a lot of cities never put their like dark sky ordinance into their development codes either, is what I was told. Um, or like their erosion control standards. That way it can be heard by an appeals officer, but not by Luba. Yeah, they're, they're very well could be something we can move out of it. I hadn't really thought of that, but there could be something.
Very well. Any other final questions from either you're up here or over there?
So from everybody's, um, background, since I'm fairly new, so would the most important ones of these be the urban forestry standards? And, um, the retaining walls and fences as a priority were come first, would you say, or?
Well, we kind of mixed it up by saying some of the smaller ones could come first.
Yeah.
That aren't that we wouldn't say are necessarily a, um, a higher priority based on the content, but they are because of the size. So we kind of mixed up the
It just seems the urban forestry standards could be a lot of conversation. Like what you were saying, Jerry, is look at more long term of what the local feel of the neighborhoods feel like and rather than looking at the tree trees.
Yeah, well, I think you can
Lots of, yeah.
So what I would say, I think that's a great question, and I think it's very pertinent. What I would say is right now, because of the moratorium, the likelihood, even with a modified moratorium of having like a lot of subdivision applications, is going to be very low. The likelihood of continuing to get sign permits and small accessory buildings, like the one Ace put in, is going to remain relatively high because they're not restricted at the moratorium, by the moratorium. So while I, while I agree with Commissioner Vincent, that the tree one would typically be the most important. I think we're kind of in a unique circumstance because the moratorium is not going to allow subdivisions, that'll scroll out. Now, in saying that, I think the retaining wall fences is very applicable and should be looked at soon. Because people are like signs, people are always looking to retain walls and fences on their house, so. And I'm not, I'm not trying to minimize the importance of urban forestry. I just think it's likely to have less impact in the next six months to year because of the moratorium restrictions than some of the other sections right now. It is, because typically in past years, when I worked here, the urban forestry thing is definitely the thing that comes up the most in the commission.
Do you foresee the moratorium going further than another six months? Is that so?
Yes. I think it'll be modified from what it currently states, but yeah, I don't, I don't think there'll be a full lift. I think it'll be. You know, with how the moratoriums work, it's not actually a modification to the moratorium. It's actually a new moratorium, just so you know, like the because state law only allows us to extend moratoriums. When you actually have any changes to the resolution, it's actually considered a new moratorium. I know it's kind of bizarre, but that is how it starts at state level. So the one they just extended on November twentieth was an extension because they didn't make any changes to the resolution. We're hopeful that with the negotiations with EPA and D Q, that when we have the next moratorium change, it will just be a new moratorium with new with new findings, essentially a new restrictions.
Maybe priorities.
Yeah, potentially, yeah.
Okay, everybody get their questions answered. We'll see everyone, or we'll see those that can make it Monday, Monday. And if there's nothing else, we will, sure.
And one request, if you can't make it on Monday, if you can just let me know, the mayor is wanting to have more of an accurate count of who's going to be there ahead of the meeting, so. If I don't hear from you, I'll just assume that you're going to be there. But if you're not going to be there, if you could let me know, just like I let him know.
Very good. Thank you, everyone, for for coming.